...Councillor Metari.
Here.
Councillor Robel.
Here.
The Councilwoman Marie Burke has not attended this evening, and Mayor Kimball.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the honor of the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting has been moved to the press and the public, according to the public meeting.
Board of Manager?
Uh, the survey, digital 3D survey will take place next week on Washington Avenue as part of the Streetscape project. We're hoping that that will take only one week. From that point, after the reports are prepared, then we can begin the location of the actual streetlights that will be installed in Washington Avenue. We have finalized the movie selection and date on the family movie night, which will be July twenty-third, it's a Wednesday evening, and the feature film will be the Lego movie. Recreation Department will be sponsoring, presenting the event, and hopefully it will turn out. The July fireworks have been finalized, flyers are out on that event as well.
Kevin, why don't we start with the main streets?
We have a road improvement project which will be introduced at the July first council session. It was completed, but we don't have enough time to get it through to this session. We got introduced, second meeting will be later than that month, we'll do the road work over Sunday.
All right, before that happens, when we do the list of streets between now and then, Street is in very, very poor condition, it was kept half between the Union and Washington, but right now there's big holes in there that can be filled in, because that is a street that I will have on the list to be paved, uh, and between the Union and Washington.
We also include Jerome, because we've had multiple complaints by the city in the area of San Francisco.
For the road improvement project on Washington Avenue, the public information meeting, we got a notice that it will be Monday, June sixteenth, from six to eight, at Town Hall. Uh, where are we having it at Town Hall? Is it in this room?
Yeah, I asked you before, could you check into the podcast to see if we get any info?
Special action?
Introduce, introduction of the two thousand fourteen municipal budget.
Mayor Marshall.
Second.
Mr. Coganelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Kimball.
Yes. For everybody's information, the budget will be going on sixty-two dollars a year per household.
On the town.
On the municipal side.
On the municipal side, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I want to clarify that.
Right.
On the municipal side.
And that's for the average residential town.
Communications.
Hey, notice on the public information meeting received from the New Jersey Department of Transportation to take place a month ago, received from this community, the hotel hall informed local officials, residents, and business owners about the Route seven paving reconstruction and pedestrian safety project.
Mayor Marshall, open public participation.
Second.
Councillor Coganelli.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Notari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Two quick things. You couldn't hear the amount you said, you know, so that's sixty-two dollars.
Oh, sixty-two.
On the average of...
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars is the average residential assessment. Sixty-two dollars and three cents is the actual increase per household. On the municipal side.
On the municipal side, so. Did you mention that they were going to do a survey or something for the Washington?
No, there is a meeting scheduled.
No, I thought you said something would be done within the next week.
Oh, digital 3D survey, yes, absolutely.
For the safer streets project.
For the Streetscape project, yeah.
Well, can they, will they have the information for this week?
It's not, it's not, it's not two separate, two separate meetings.
Okay.
Two separate meetings.
All right, thank you.
Angie Persia, fifteen Kimball Street. Talking about paving, how about the corner of Mill Street and Franklin Ave of Mill? That was where the water main was broken. They fixed it, and there's stones all over the place, it's a disaster. Is that going to be paved?
Well, we wouldn't pave the concrete side, well, we're going to replace the concrete side.
But when, this has been quite a long time.
We'll have the time to put it in next few years.
Okay. Also, what's to be the sitting part on the corner of Patterson and Mill Street? Why is the grass not being cut there? It's overgrown and it looks like heck.
I received a memo on that, the grass was cut last week.
No, I was, I just passed it today coming here, and, and there's all the flowers over there from the grass.
I received the memo on that, the grass was cut last week.
Well, I don't know, it's a problem of the week.
The person who sent the memo will also thank me for having the grass cut, and we'll have it cut again this week, whether it's mid.
Okay, because it looks terrible. I'm, I'm going to make the statement, but I don't want any answers, because I know what I'm going to do. I am totally, totally upset over the Longo boy. By the grace of God, that could be my son. He put his life on hold for eight years, spent time in Iraq, risked his life so that we all could live in a free country, and I did listen to Channel Twelve, News Twelve, and it said, they didn't want to fire him, he was a good worker, a hard worker, but because of political pressure, they let him go. That's a disgrace. That's how we handle our veterans? And nobody got him the job, he applied for it, but because of political pressure that his father was running, this is what they do. This is what this town is all about, and I'm disgusted with it. And you can't even, at Franklin Street, kids can't even wait for a bus anymore. I pay too much taxes for what I have, but I'm willing to pay a little bit more to have more policemen on the street. I'm willing, and, so that we can be safe. You pull out of your driveway, there's a car blocking your driveway, and, and they're ready to mug you. And it, it's just a disgrace. And also, I don't want an answer, because I know what I feel. Marie Burke is not a racist. If people that are racist, that's a moral issue. It's, it's not a commandment, it's a moral issue, and today you don't get away with it. And the harassment for Marie and Joe Longo has got to stop, because if it doesn't stop, we have to seek outside help. That's it. I have more, but I won't say it here.
Phil Trent, Cantone and Prospect Avenue. Last year I had called Public Works about my neighbor's tree, next door to me, that it was loaded with carpenter ants. They came up and looked at it and said, we'll look into it. This year she called, the tree is loaded with carpenter ants. They come up, they spray something, but it didn't do anything. They said they have to go back and research it to see what can be done. Now, a couple of years ago, two doors up from me, my neighbor had the same problem with the tree. The tree eventually died, and they had to take it down. They've got to do something to take care of these trees, because we're going to lose them. Now, her tree, they're loaded with carpenter ants, sawdust all over the place, something has to be done to take care of that tree, and the tree is going to die. Why, you know...
Can you provide me the address, please?
One thirty-one Mount Prospect Avenue. And the guy, the seller that comes around and trims and takes the best part of the tree for his, whatever he does with dirty blossoms, he's not cutting the shooters. Anytime he comes around and does that, that you're giving permission to go, go look at the trees. There's shooters on them all over the place, they're not taking care of that. So if he comes back again this year, please tell him to trim the tree properly, and not to take what he wants, to trim the shooters from the bottom off. I mean, we're giving him the privilege of taking what he wants, but he's not doing the correct job. Now, I read a letter that came around, I think it was George and Kimball about, that you want to make more recreation for the children, okay? We have the pistol range up by Jerome Street, it was left to go to pot. Right next door is Nutley. Look, look at how they maintain their field and all that stuff. Uh, ice hockey ring, I mean, the hockey ring at school nine deteriorated. School eight had basketball hoops up there, one day, I don't know how, they cut the poles down. The recreation building had beautiful tennis courts, because one, one resident complained because he didn't like it, they ripped down the, they ripped them down. I want to know what Kevin did for the kids.
Well, we are doing playground, I'm quoting, we're renovating that playground.
Absolutely.
But we're always negotiating with our developers on the, the field house.
What about the older kids, that's for the little kids, but what about the teenagers?
No, no, that's for the older kids too.
For the teenagers?
Yes, not, not for the one, not for the playground, but we're always negotiating with our developers to get money to put up a, a recreation building.
Well, what about a kid that doesn't want to go to record, what about the schools? What about the schools? What about the schools? Can't they open them up at night a little bit?
I don't know, we don't have that authority.
If you request it?
We could request it, but then they're making us pay for janitors.
So what? You pay for a janitor for one night, it gets her up the street instead of being your ass.
We pay, I believe we do pay for janitors already for our recreation program, the schools are open. When I looked at the rec, the budget, schools are open for different activities.
They're open for different activities?
Yes.
For within the school, for the school children?
Of course.
To what?
Basketball, I believe it's twirling, cheerleading.
That's for the little kids, I was talking about the older kids, because they're the ones that, they wind up rolling around in the street, and they get in trouble, the cops chase them here, they chase them there, they have no place to go. They used to have a recreation building.
And that's why we're trying to develop that, that's why we're trying to get the developers to agree to put up a rec building, where we'll have a gym, I guess for the older kids. What else do you want us to provide?
Not some basketball hoop shop, and the kids would be perfectly happy playing there.
We can use the rest of the basketball.
My kids, my kids used to go, when we took them down in Nutley, and they would never take that. So I would, I would appreciate it for the older kids.
Follow up on that, the, we had a friendly house. You folks destroyed it, after spending seventy-three thousand dollars on architects and engineers' report to repair it. And I looked at those plans, not only that seventy-three thousand, the fifty thousand, a brand-new roof, brand-new air conditioning and heating system, as, set right here, Tom Harris said they put in there. So look at all the wasted money. You're a reacting town manager. Remember I paid the office, because I broke, it was helping me, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, we're talking about money, you got no money, what did you vote? A hundred and forty thousand dollars was spent to an architect and engineer to convert three eighty-three to a community center. When I went to the office, it says, I never heard that, we called Susan, what, Sue Riley? She came down in five minutes with the plan, and you didn't know that. And then what do we do? After spending a hundred and forty grand to convert a beautiful building we had into a community center, you sell it for two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, way below market value. We had beautiful basketball courts at the rec house. What happened? They get knocked down, and you build a bathroom facility for a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand, which is never open, so then you put a porta-john. And then you guys embarrassed about all this? This is corruption. Now, there's different levels of corruption. Some of it, some, you know, this is mismanagement of our tax dollars. So when you say, oh, ask me the developer, but what the hell's the developer got to do with that? We've had all these facilities, you have destroyed them. The hell with the children, said, like my wife says, how come Nutley?
Wait, we never said the hell with the children. I don't, you ever heard that words come out of our mouth?
Well, first, I'm paraphrasing, the meaning of what you said, it's just about said that. And maybe also says, you heard my wife complain about basketball courts. Never once in her life, we love kids, we want things for kids. She fought at school number eight, when they cut the basketball courts down there to get them put up there. So don't, don't tell me that, Mr. Kimball, and, and we've done nothing, and it, it's just such a disgrace. Now, my grant engine book, we've done all their games, go up the right field, the concession stand is open, the bathrooms are open, the public, all their fields and all that. Now, how come Nutley, on the same street, right next, the exact same property, the exact same, how come they maintain their field?
You know what I do, I suggest you go up to the municipal stadium one night, and watch all the activity that's going on in that field that you were against. You should see the, the soccer, the best, the, the baseball, all the ballgames going. I suggest you do that, Mr. Grant, if you want to.
Mr. Kimball.
Do you know I gave her pictures?
Yes, and you know what? That municipal stadium.
Why do you say it was going to sink in two years?
Because, because when I left office, it was an A-one condition, sprinklers are working, the municipal stadium, and the...
And it never flooded like it used to.
If you want to be honest, no, because we were going to put a retention base in there. So you spend all this money, and previous councils spent millions, remember all those failed plans, which Ken and Kennedy actually started the pitch and drive to stop that construction? And that, and that's what I agree with there. So don't tell me I was against that, but I let that stay in permanent condition.
I am telling you, you were against it.
Well, do, do something for the children. Now, I keep bringing up, it's like seven years, the cars up there park all day long in the meeting, you know who I'm referring to, all right? I've been dozen times to Mr. Esposito, I just saw him last week, he says he's going to talk to Otunga. I talked to the chief this morning, he's well-made, we'll have to enforce a two-hour limit. Well, this is seven years. Seven years, you kill a whole business. The guy's seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, opens his doors, and every meter is, is, is taken up there by his cars, all day long. Academy Street, by the library, all day long. What are we doing? Uh, nothing. Uh, the other thing, it's been about five months since February, the hydrogen by the Dairy Queen has been leaking. I bring it up to Tommy, oh, we'll look into it. It's leaking. This morning I called Chief Caruso, myself, he's going to look into it, he'll have the appropriate action taken. It's five months. Not only are you losing water, what if that leak is a bad valve? And God forbid there's a fire, and they're going to open it, and the thing breaks, and they've got a flood, and they can't hook up. You know, so it's not only the money we're losing, I had a tenant that didn't tell me about a bathroom leak, and two months I got a seven hundred dollar water bill. So imagine all the water going right down the street next to it, and this is five months. I keep bringing up publicly, nothing's ever done about it. And, Mr. Kimball, you sent some literature around, the truth about taxes, and you said the average three point nine, and you said certified in Chief Financial Richard Mondelli. I'm glad you sent it around, because it shows, since you took office, the tax rate, the taxes on the average house went up forty-four percent, but...
I said it was sixty-four.
The average tax rate, that's not my literature. I don't, don't talk about the disgusting campaign literature, when I had the idea with taxes and numbers that are accurate. What happened since you took office are property values, went from averages of three oh four to two thirty-eight, twenty-seven percent decrease in property values. But now you only gave the total taxes, but you folks are responsible for municipal taxes. In your eight years in office, on my municipal, the municipal portion of my taxes went up eighty-four percent, from two thousand forty-six dollars to thirty-seven eighty-seven, just the municipal. And as you said in your literature, certified by Mr. Manelli, last week I sent this document, a letter, and I asked him, he hasn't answered me yet, I asked him if my math is correct, so we'll see what he says. And finally, at the last meeting, Mr. Murphy does not recall the police documents that Mr. Kennedy gave to me. However, I have the newspaper article, and I also have the letter. Mr. Murphy sent me a letter to return, to return those police documents.
He hasn't.
All right? And I regret, but he had no memory of any of this last meeting.
Want me to, want me to read it to the audience?
Yes.
It says, during the council agreement on Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand eleven, you made a public statement to the government body that you were in possession of the township documents that have been delivered to you from Councilman Kevin Kennedy to third party, Henry Charzuski. Councilman Kennedy immediately and vigorously denied the allegation. I have spoken to Mr. Charzuski, confirmed that he gave copies of the documents to you, but he had never received these documents from Councilman Kevin Kennedy, nor did he tell you that he had. After you made the above comment, Mayor Kimball asked that you return any documents in your possession to Town Hall. Subsequent to the meeting, we spoke briefly, and you indicated that you would rebrand the documents to my office the following day, Wednesday, February ninth. As of this date, he has not, I have not received them. Would you kindly contact me and receive the correspondence and return the records immediately?
And they were given to the lady, they were given to the lady.
And there were hand and chief, in the presence of a reporter and four other residents, and Chief Rook Conville signed the letter. I made, I took copies of the letter, signed what was in it. Now, if that's not accurate, because at the last meeting, my wife wasn't here, and I says, technically it's correct, he didn't air to the meeting, he went right by that door, told my wife to go over there, and she's here tonight, so it's not just me saying something, a hearsay, and he says, I got them for you. And Manila Folgers sent the video of Phyllis from Kevin Kenny with the call me, with the two phone numbers, and all those documents were inside of it. Now, I returned them though, and also in the article now, Mr. Murphy then said, when I said, well, if they're not that bad, I said, now you've got proof, I handed them over to the chief. He said, well, I looked at it, it don't appear to be nothing confidential. I said, give them back, and then he says, I'll have to review them further. No, it's three years. So if you review them further, if they're not confidential, I'd like them back. But here's the other question, which you said at the last meeting, if the police went to Mr. Charzuski's house, and he said, because he gave a lot of documents, that's why Mr. Charzuski probably didn't understand it, but if Mr. Charzuski said that, yes, he gave me such documents, but Kevin Kennedy didn't give them to him, well then the police, if they're good investigators, who did give them to him? How did Mr. Charzuski get confidential police documents?
Jesus, amazing, but I can't answer that three years later, right? I, I don't know why you didn't come forward to it.
So, he said, I, I asked at another meeting, I did, and Mr. Murphy kept saying, oh, I'm reviewing them, see if they're confidential. I mean, these were police logs, these were reports of investigations and certain conflicts, these were serious matters, police investigations. So I'm publicly asking again, if they were exactly confidential, I'd like them back. Under the Open Record Act.
Did you open them?
What?
Did you open them?
Yes, I did. He told my wife, she looked pretty, I don't know why he did, to maybe be in those eyes, he doesn't, he nabbed the character.
I don't know what documents they were.
Huh?
I don't know what documents they were. So, uh, we'll have to ask the chief.
Yeah, but that's what Mr. Murphy said, he's doing a little bit, but he hasn't answered yet. So like you said, three years later, so by the next meeting, can we have an answer?
I can't, I don't, I'll try. Okay, is that good enough?
There were sixty-some odd pages of internal police investigative documents.
Well, then you can't have.
Huh?
If there are internal police investigations, you can't have.
Mr. Murphy said they were not of a confidential nature.
I don't know what they are. I don't know.
Well, then how can you say, you know, I can't have them?
You said they were, because if you said they're internal investigations, you can't have them, I could tell you that, okay? That's what I could tell you.
They find out how Mr. Charzuski did. Do an investigation, how did a citizen?
I know, I won't do an investigation, I'll have the police do an investigation, I won't do it.
If, if I'm not allowed to have those documents, who gave them, Mr. Charzuski?
And they didn't give them to him, they gave them to me.
I don't know, Mr. Ben, I don't know.
They gave them to me.
Well, find out.
How many did you get them?
I can find that, I'll have the police try to find out.
All right, you're two people, that...
She handed them to me.
That guy right there, Councilman Kevin Kennedy, gives my rights right out there in the hall over there.
Okay, Mr. Ben.
When I looked at them, I was like...
Why don't you try and go out with the police department?
Anything else?
Mayor, why don't you call this public hearing?
Hi, Commissioner Winslow, Court Street, Melville. Um, I'm surprised to see that Marie Burke is not here. Um, I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting, but I need to definitely get this out now, since I wasn't able to make it to the last meeting. Um, racism is still alive and well, everyone knows that, okay? There's different degrees of racism, um, a lot of people feel there is none, okay? Um, this is going to be a two-fold, okay? The first thing I want to say is that I was the person that played the recording for her to hear, and what she came back at me with was, wasn't verified. And I told her at that time, no, it wasn't verified, but it would be. Now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways she could have answered the question, what did she mean by that? She could have just said, I meant an ignorant person, because that's what the word means, okay? But she didn't do that, instead she's saying that it's not her. So I wanted to say publicly to her tonight, that if she wasn't comfortable with the level of the person that we, as a community, pulled together and got to review the tape, that I would personally pay for her to pick out someone to review the tape. And as long as she provides them with the information to the person that we had examined the tape, as well as the person that she wants to examine, I would personally pay for it. Okay, so that's the first thing I'm going to say. The second thing I'm going to say is that, and this is where all this leads to, um, little story. I was going to a Board of Education meeting, walking with individuals, walking up the hill, you know how the cars face it, and we were talking about racism, there was three or four other people with me, and I said, you know, racism is still alive and well, unfortunately, and I grew up in this town, okay? And I have not, I didn't grow up at the level that I see now, okay? But it seems like it's getting progressively worse. So I was walking up and we were talking about it, and some person in a car told me, started yelling at me, saying, um, what did you just say? Whoa, who's he talking to? I turned around, and this person ranting and raving out the window, what did you just say? What did you just say? I said, I'm having a private conversation, number one, and number two, I'm talking about racism. So they go on to spouting, spouting, you don't know who I am, you don't know who I am. Excuse me? I don't know who you are, and I don't care, excuse me, who the hell you are, okay? You, you don't know who I am. Well, come to find out, as I'm being pulled away, we're getting very heated, because I've never had anybody come up to me like that, especially in a private conversation, and they say, that's Marie's son. He's able to speak to people like that? You're able to accost me in public? Okay, I don't have a right to free speech, you're taking my freedoms away? See, that's the problem when poisonous things like this come out, because the thing about it is, it basically makes our town look like a joke, because people have differences regarding Melville already, believe me. I hear them all the time, and that's how I grew up here, first thing they said, we didn't know black people lived there, okay? Among other things. Okay, but this type getting out there, this doesn't make the town getting better, this makes it look worse. And it's like a joke. Okay, people work hard, I pay my taxes, I own a house, I've been here for years, I grew up here, my grandparents were here, okay? My aunts and uncles live here, they own houses, they live here for generations, they helped build a church in this town. I'm not going to stand for this, okay? If there was a slip of the tongue, you apologize, you accept your mistake, that's fine, but to deny it means you're lying. And the thing about it is, if you lie about this, what else do you lie about? And are you going to stick up for my rights, if that's your true belief behind doors? So I hope somebody's doing something about this, because I'm not going to let it go.
Miss, I, I, I know you weren't at the meeting last week.
No, I wasn't at the meeting last week, I was stuck.
We had a resolution on a call in for resignation, went through six to one, we cannot force her to resign, under this form of government. We, we censured her at a meeting prior, yes, for her resignation last meeting. As, as a government body, we, we can't help every step that we take. She can be recalled by the people, but that's the only way she could be moved.
Well, then that's what has to be done, that's what will be done. I mean, because the thing about it is, oh, it's an embarrassment on the town. I never thought of this town as, as in this way, now, okay?
I'm sorry.
And like I said, if her son is allowed to accost people like that and say, you don't know who I am, no, I really don't know who you are. Okay, I don't know who you are, and I don't care what you think you can do to me. Okay? So, like I said, something has to be done about it, something, if this can't, this cannot continue, it's just racism. It's really just racism. And like I said, my offer is out there, anybody that wants to... Anybody that wants to let her know, I'm willing to pay for her to get her own copy of the tape, okay? Verified internally, as long as she provides what the person that verified the tape originally needs, to make it a hundred percent, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Can we say something else? Can we say something?
No, Ange, you can't speak anymore.
I can?
No.
Okay, I'll put it in the newspaper.
I agree.
And I back for you a hundred percent.
Ange, you finished?
I'm finished.
Thank you.
For now.
Mount Murphy, sixty-three Jeffersons. I was here in October to find out what people can do with a vacant house across the street from me. I explained the situation. The house, this past winter, was loaded with snow and ice all summer, all winter. Nobody bothers taking care of the side porch. Front porch is falling apart. Now, the other, two weeks ago, the guys were there cutting the grass. I asked them if I could go inside and look at the house. The house is dormant. And up the stairs, in one room, the ceiling is down. The room next to it, the ceiling is down. You can look out to the roof and see. You went downstairs in the first floor. The ceiling in the living room is down. All the hardwood floors are short. And in the basement, there's about three or four foot of mold growing off the walls. Now, that's got to be some kind of a hazard. I don't know if you people have done anything about it. Have we been to people?
Mr. Murphy, to answer your question, our property maintenance department has visited the property and assessed numerous fines against the property. Unfortunately, the property is in a state of foreclosure. The lenders today are very hard to track down. They have attorneys, we send the notices out to the lenders. Unfortunately, in many cases, their attitude is such that they would rather pay the fines than maintain the properties. So we make every effort through the Clean, Bully program to maintain the grass and secure the property. I'll make sure tomorrow that we have someone out there to seal that front door because that's a safety hazard. To seal the front door, that's a safety hazard and I'm concerned I wouldn't want a child to enter into that drive.
But the doors are locked.
Oh, how did you get in, sir?
The maintenance people were there cutting the grass.
For the bank?
I don't work, I don't know who owns it. Do you know who owns the building?
Uh, there is a law firm that, that represents the lender. And for certain.
Through the chairman, real quick. Tom, next time that you see somebody besides the town cutting it, if we can get a neighbor to call down to the manager's office, maybe we can hold them. We have to add a similar thing in Overhill, we finally got a holder of people. I mean, if these people are there hired by the bank to maintain it.
They're major people, they don't know anything.
Yeah, well, they would know who hires them. They should know who hires them, right? Yeah.
And see, maybe, I'm hoping, would you see them if they get that? Would you demand that I take that?
I'll have to do that. Code enforcement will look at it, code enforcement.
Are the taxes being paid on this?
Yes.
So who pays the tax?
Traditionally, the lender paid the taxes on our property, but it's in foreclosure. And then it's sold, morally be responsible. We had a similar problem on Graylock last year. Since it's been sold, the prayers are being- On Graylock.
I understand, I understand. I get up in the morning, that's what I see. It's dead, really rude.
Mr. Murphy.
Now, they have a, a S and B that's been in that driveway for four years, has never moved. No one knows who owns it. How can a car just sit there and nobody does anything about it?
There were multiple cars on the property on Graylock and the prosecutor's office would not allow us to tow it. Our police department moved a request and we're told we cannot tow the vehicles we live in here. The cost of any damage to the vehicles is controlled.
They can't take it. Now, where do I leave it?
I'm sorry?
If it's unregistered, excuse me, I'm sorry for talking out, but if it's my, it's my disdain if it's an unregistered vehicle, you cannot have it.
I'm sorry, I can't let you talk.
I'm just saying, because I know they told me that.
So where does it stand then?
Here's where we stand. We're going to send code enforcement, probably, uh, Frankie Lorenzo here tomorrow. We'll see, we'll let him look at that building, see if he could condemn it. If he can condemn it, we'll talk to our attorney, see if we can take it down.
Well, they condemn the addition they have on the back, they put a, in the-
Well, I'll see if it's made enough where we can take this property down and put it in on the property.
I'm just saying. The roof was put on, on the back of that house, on a deck, and it was all done without a permit. So I don't see where there would be any problem. If we look up and find out that this was done, they'll leave. It's simple as that.
Okay.
As simple as that.
That's what I'm saying. Did we ask?
Mayor, why don't you pause?
Talking about Drawl Street, you're talking about the raise right there? And we're going to be paid that, we measure that for some reason.
Absolutely.
George Anne Flay, most likely Seventh Stevens Street. Uh, I'd like to thank Kevin Esposito and the Health Department. We have also an issue of the house that was in disrepair in our block, people were actually living in. Uh, we've been able to have the Health Department come in, cite them on the bad reasons that were wrong. There's still, are issues, of course, the house is still standing and it's still an issue, but it takes time. Uh, and I just wanted to thank you for doing that. Uh, also, school number one, someone came, cut the grass, and then like two days of the last meeting. So that also was great help. But it's a long gone problem in a lot of communities where they have houses in foreclosure, bankruptcy, uh, and they're in limbo. The best thing that we can do as a community is take note of it. Have the Health Department come in. I know in, in our case, we even tried to help the people that were staying in the house by helping them clean up around their premises. It's a little bit harder when there's no one there. But even in the case of taxing, that information is public information. And we can contact the lien holder and let them know that they, they have an obligation. We as citizens, we don't have to put everything on the backs of our, our government officials and our already overgrown tax department. We can contact them ourselves personally. We can get petitions. You're in a block and that house is making your house home values, uh, decrease. You want a remedy for it. You just can't sit around and wait. Thank you.
Mayor, why don't you post?
Second.
Record list?
Mayor, remember, how's that, you, Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, why don't you move to the second agenda?
Second.
Can you please? Court oral.
Governor, how's that?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Roosevelt?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
There's a, this isn't really official town business, but there's a fundraiser this Saturday at Walgreens on the corner of Graylock and Washington Avenue. One of the little first grade, first grade students got diagnosed with a brain tumor. So from, yeah, from the, from the preschool. Ten, ten to four o'clock on, uh, this Saturday. There's going to be a little hot dog and bake sale for them.
I believe the name is JD, so use your prayers.
No, I'm going to revolutionize. Revolution, authorizing the advertising, a bid for the disposal of dirt from the road jobs of the township in Bellevue. Move it. Second, court oral.
County member, Tom Galloway?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
Yes.
Yes.
Penny?
What?
What's in the drink? What's in the drink? All in favor?[1795.20]